Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the City Planning Commission will begin after a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City of Sioux Falls City Council in writing within five days. And any actions taken tonight on initial development plans or alternative plans are final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the third council meeting of this month, or at the first council meeting of next month if associated with a rezoning. Any recommendations made on rezoning requests, future land use amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first city council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at 6:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff and the Planning Commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the Shape Sioux Falls 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. And third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. By approving the consent agenda, the commission is approving the items on consent. Therefore, upon approval of the agenda, those members of the public in attendance for those items are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item, by first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item. Second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward to make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone and identify themselves for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask that you please either turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on CityLink or is available at any time at sioufals.org. Thank you for your cooperation. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission meeting. Before we get started, just a few quick housekeeping items to reiterate. When it comes to testimony this evening, we look forward to hearing from everyone here who wishes to speak. When you do come forward, please state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments limited to five minutes. That will allow us time to make sure we can hear from everyone this evening. Also, please be sure to silence your electronic devices at this time, and that is just as a courtesy and for the flow of the meeting for everyone. So, at this point, I would like to get us rolling here. Denise, if you could proceed with the reading of the consent agenda items.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item one is approval of minutes. Item 2A, petition rezone 0159432022, rezoning from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the RT2 Town Home Residential Traditional District located at 2,000 East 12th Street. Item 2B, petition rezone 0159572022, rezoning from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the C3 Commercial Community District located south of East 57th Street and South Ratliff Avenue and east of South Ratliff Avenue. Item 2C, petition rezone 0159642022, rezoning from the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density District to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District located southeast of the intersection of West Graceland Court and West Graceland Place. Item 2D, petition rezone 0159772022, rezoning from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the I1 Light Industrial District located at 2,900 East Rice Street. Item 2E, petition rezone 0159872022, rezoning from the CN Conservation, RD2 Town Home, RA1 Apartment Residential, and C4 Commercial Districts to the CN Conservation, RD2 Town Home, and C4 Districts located northeast of East Arrowhead Parkway and South Six Mile Road. Item 2F, petition rezone 0159822022, rezoning from the AG Agriculture District to the CN Conservation, RS Residential, RD1 Twin Home, RD2 Town Home, RA1 Apartment, RA3 Apartment, LW Live Work, and C2 Commercial Districts located northeast of East 57th Street and South Six Mile Road. Item 2G, petition conditional use 0159792022, conditional use permit for on sale alcohol within 500 feet of a sensitive land use located at 101 North Minnesota Avenue. Item 2H, subdivision plan 0159062022, preliminary subdivision plan for Majestic Village Edition located northeast of East 57th Street and South Six Mile Road. Item 2I, petition subdivision plan 0159812022, preliminary subdivision plan for Sanford Sports Complex South Edition located west of Syncore Drive and Northwestport Avenue. Item 3, consent agenda approval.
Thank you, Denise. At this point, I think staff, we had some changes to the consent agenda already that we want to have noted. Those items, I believe, are 2D as in Delta, and... What was the other one? Is that the only one?
Just 2D right now.
2D? Very good. So, everyone, item 2D is already going to come off the consent agenda and will be discussed at the time of the regular agenda. Commissioners, are there any other items you would like to see removed from the consent agenda and moved to the regular agenda? Seeing none. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to have any of the items on the consent agenda that were read moved to the regular agenda for further discussion and review? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to move 2D to the regular agenda.
Very good.
We do the motion to approve the consent agenda then second, and then you'll make a motion to amend it, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Jason.
I'll make the motion to approve of the consent agenda.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, and now...
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to amend 2D to the regular agenda.
We have a motion to approve, or sorry, to amend the regular consent agenda to move item 2D to the regular agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that item? All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no? All right, we have the consent agenda amended, and now we will vote to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amended consent agenda, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no? Consent agenda is approved, and we'll move now to the regular agenda approval. Can I have a motion for regular agenda approval as amended?
Motion to approve the regular agenda as amended.
Second.
Sorry, I got out of order there, too. The regular agenda approval.
Correct.
If we could have a second for that.
Second.
Beauty. And now we have to amend the regular agenda.
Mr. Chair. Yep, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move 4A to 5A.
We have an amendment proposed to move item 4A to numbered number 5A. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that item? All those in favor of amending the regular agenda with that change, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no? And now, vote to approve the regular agenda as amended. Please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no? We may proceed. Everyone who is here for an item on the consent agenda, please feel free to go at this time, but we'd love to have you hang out and listen to the rest of the meeting if you're so inclined. Thank you.
Item 2D, petition rezone 0159772022, rezoning from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the I1 Light Industrial District located at 2,900 East Rice Street.
Good evening, Commissioner. Adam Roach with Planning and Development Services. The applicant is Chris Matthew with Haggen Wilken Archer. The owner is Bill Rush. The purpose of this request is to operate a full-service, heavy-duty truck sales and service dealership. The site is approximately 6.12 acres. Our public agencies provided comments on this application. One thing that staff wanted to note was access. The applicant has advised that Rice Street will be a four, will be four-six lane with a center median in the 10- to 15-year future timeframe. The access for this parcel will be restricted to a write-in and write-out. The applicant should refer to the I-29 major investment study on the South Dakota Department of Transportation's website to understand the challenges in the future of this parcel. Access consolidation or reduction can be expected with any future site plans. A change in use is required to operate the proposed heavy-duty truck sales and service here, and the proposed I-1 light industrial zoning is an appropriate fit for this location. The area is predominantly existing or proposed commercial and industrial uses. There are no plans for an expansion of the building footprint, only minor interior remodeling. Proposed hours of operation likely Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and Saturday from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Compliance with all city standards will be reviewed upon permitting, and the rezoning proposal generally follows the Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan. Yesterday, after our Planning Commission brief, we had an opportunity to meet with some adjacent landowners, and they had some concerns with noise emitting from the proposed use, also the hours of operation. There is a residential home approximately 325 feet to the east of this site, and that's what brought up some of the concerns. The applicant is here to address any questions that you may have, and then we also have some folks from the public that would like to speak about this as well.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions for staff at this point? Very good. Would the petitioner please come forward? Again, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Chris Matthew. My address is 6501 South Connie Avenue, Apartment 121, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I represent William Rush, the property owner, as was mentioned by Mr. Roach. The current property use of the tenant is a 24/7 towing company, and as the representation for the owner of the property, we would like to see it rezoned to the light manufacturing to allow the truck sales and services center for a potential tenant.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions for the petitioner at this point? Oh, very good. We may have you come back up, of course, if there are questions to answer after a bit. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Rodney Hartman. I live at 2908 East Rice Street. I'm the private owner of the property, a couple acres over from this. And yes, my concern was hours of operation, because it is my residence and stuff like that, of trucks coming and going, you know, even after hours, because, you know, they get brought in for repair or whatever after hours as well as in the timeframe of 7:00 to 10:00, plus the noise that it would create. I just don't, would like to see the hours reduced, or something along those lines, I guess. Thank you.
Oh, very good. Sorry, commissioners, any questions? Mr. Hartman? Very good. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Francis Rome. I'm here as the future purchaser of East Gate Towing. I'm also representing Connie Park, who is the landowner. I have authority to speak on her behalf. Yes, we are a 24/7 business. Our office hours are 8:30 to 5:00 with no repair service at all. We've been neighbors with Rod Hartman for 22 years. We've never had a problem with noise, but all of a sudden, we're going to go from a truck, trucking business as conkled trucking is, where they have a few trucks coming out daily, nightly, wearing out of our lot maybe, on average, two times a night over 30 days. Our noise, we do no repair facility work at all. We're closed on Saturdays and Sundays, except to release a vehicle for a customer. The noise complaint, or the noise we're going to be having is from the air tools that prior to, when Ingles owned the company, when their mechanic's over there, the air tools would literally be deafening all the way through our lot, all the way over to Rod's property. So that is my concern. I do not have a problem with the truck dealership going at all. I want you to know that. It's just the hours of operation need to be cut back to a normal business hours. But I mean, when they're going to be open Saturday, 8:00 to 4:00, I won't be there. Rod Hartman will be putting up with the noise. So that is all I'd like to say. I don't have a problem with the truck dealership going in, it's just the hours of operation.
Oh, very good. Commissioners, any questions? No? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I would like to ask the petitioner to come back up, maybe to address a couple of the concerns that were brought up during testimony.
As far, pardon me. As far as hours of operations go, to our knowledge, these are pretty typical hours for a retail and sales center for semi-trucks. This is basically an industrial part of the city. It's right next to the interstate, and obviously, there are some valid concerns. No one wants loud noises at night, at all times of the day, but these are pretty typical business hours for the kind of business that is going to be there. And I can't speak for who is going to be occupying the property, but I can't imagine they'll make noise recklessly and cause anything close to a nuisance.
Very good. Commissioners, any other questions? Comments? Great. Thank you, Mr. Matthew.
Thank you.
At this point, I'll close forward a testimony and look for commission action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 2D. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'll just say that I appreciate the neighbors coming by and speaking to this item tonight. I can certainly appreciate the concern in living next to something like that. However, when looking at some of these items, we have to look at the surrounding uses in the area that the rezon is occurring in, and given when I look at that, certainly appears to be, with the current zoning of the other properties, primarily industrial area, and while I would like to put some cap on the hours of operation, I just don't think it's appropriate, given the surrounding properties in the area, so I will be voting in favor of this item.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving item 2D, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no? Item 2D has passed. Denise?
Item 5A, rezone 0159442022, rezoning from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional and the RT2 Town Home Residential Traditional Districts located at 3031 North Wayland Avenue.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application by Brent Tucker with Affordable Housing Solutions. It's just under a third of an acre and located up on 31st and Wayland Avenue, just east of Cliff. It's currently zoned RD1, as you can see from the map, and that zoning district does allow twin homes, duplexes, and single-family uses in the suburban, or single-family uses. The applicant is proposing to rezon this property to the RT1 on the south portion for a single-family home, and then the RT2 on the north portion, where they're looking to construct a twin home. The site is undeveloped. It formerly had a single-family home on it. Affordable Housing Solutions has taken that home down, and then now they're looking at developing what you can kind of see example here in the picture. The proposed zoning change will allow that construction of a new owner-occupied, single-family home and twin home. Required parking will be available on-site. Setbacks are follows. With him rezoning it to more of a traditional district, it allows a little bit of smaller setbacks. Side yards are still five, rear yards are 10 feet, and then the specific twin home is on the corner there, as you can see, and so they're required two front yards, one 10 feet on the north side, and then one 25 they're proposing on the east Wayland side. As this site is located, or the DD3 form, that'd be the single-family house, they're required a minimum of five feet still on the rear, like a normal single-family house. That reduce 10 feet in the back, even though they are providing a 25-foot setback, which is typical of a suburban house, and then 20 in the front, and they look like they're providing 25 in the front also. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting with city staff present on Thursday of last week, February 24th. The neighbors had the following concerns. Density of this site in the area is larger than the rural-type housing of the Norton area. Specifically, there was one house on the slot, and now they're putting three units. Increased traffic by adding those additional units. The unimproved streets and no sidewalks are not conducive by adding additional units to the site. The applicant is present tonight with Affordable Housing Solutions, and we do have several members of the neighborhood, Norton neighborhood, that are also in attendance that would like to speak. Because the subject application is consistent with the Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, with them proposing a twin home and single-family, staff does recommend approval of this rezoning, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for Jason on this item? Thank you, Jason. The applicant could step forward, please. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Brent Tucker, Affordable Housing Solutions. His address is at 630 South Minnesota Avenue here in Sioux Falls.
Very good. Anything you'd like to tell us about your project?
Well, what I'd like to say is when we were approached to purchase this property by the previous owner, it did have a rundown house on it that was under notice and order to demolish by the City of Sioux Falls. It also had a rundown mobile home on this parcel. So, we purchased it, cleared the property, as that's what our organization does to create affordable housing here in Sioux Falls. So, we purchased it. The original plan, my original plan when buying it was thinking that it was large enough to do two sets of twin homes, and I discovered that that just wasn't feasible. So, we also, so we reduced it to three. We worked with the school systems to build homes as well, and the single-family house on the lot is currently being constructed by the Harrisburg High School, and that house will be moved on-site, and then the twin home that we are designating, that we'd like to build on the Lot 1 of that parcel in the north end, that will be built, stick frame on-site.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant at this point?
I do. Mr. Chair, Brent, how long ago did you purchase the property?
I believe we closed on it the first part of December, or no, it was in November, and we cleared it the first part of December.
Okay. Thank you. How many?
2021, sorry.
Yeah, how many bedrooms will be in each unit?
Each unit will have two bedrooms and one bathroom on the main floor, and then there will be additional space, because we will be building basements on these, there'll be additional two bedrooms and one bath available. We don't finish that section off.
Question I have for you, just from the different renderings, we can reference the map that's actually on the screen right now, if you can see that. Are the, is the garage approach to the twin home on Wayland?
Yes, yes, that's correct. They'll both be facing North Wayland Avenue.
They will?
Yeah. The little bumpouts that you see, that's actually the garages that come out there. And then the recessed portion is where the entrance, the main entrance door is at.
Very good. Thank you. I was just trying to get that.
Right. It's hard to decipher.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Will that be, will each have a two-stall garage?
Yep. Both of them are all two-starter for parking for two cars, yes.
Any other questions, commissioners? Very good. We may have you come back up based on testimony, but thank you.
You're welcome.
This time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Ken Frederick. I live at 1419 East 31st Street North. I live in the property just to the east of where this will be going up. My property is the exact same length as this property, where we now are proposing to rezon. I have a few issues, you know. I approached this with an open mind, and I have visited with Mr. Tucker, and we've talked about things, but one being drainage. I've lived there since 1998, and the water runs, it's a downhill slope. The water runs from the west to the east, and now you're putting up two homes. You've got 120-foot lot. You're putting up a 55-foot wide twin home with a 10-foot space, and then you're putting up a 35-foot, uh, single-family home that, where all this water would naturally run, now I guess it's going to know to go between the two homes, the 10-foot space, I guess, but... So, we really got to have some reassurances that we're going to get this drainage done correctly. I mean, yes, we're going to get it done, or aren't we going to get it done? Number two, Norton Acres is not a high-density housing area. We are low to moderate density. Nowhere in this area are houses stacked upon this way. You're going to put three families in 111 by 120 foot. Your parking on Wayland Avenue is going to be issues. 31st Street is a racetrack, and like I said, you can see a kid getting killed. But mostly, you know, after owning this home, paying taxes, keeping my property up, I now will lose my east view. I have nothing. I will look at the back of a house to the east of me there. And improvements are always good in this city, and they, but they need to be done appropriately. And I do not feel that stacking homes this way on this corner lot, you know, and taking away... The reason I bought this home in the first place was because of the open space, and now you're taking that away. What rights do I have as a homeowner, as a property owner? I mean, I know... I mean, I know, you know, like I said, we have to have progress, but we need to do it, we need to build appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Frederick? Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this particular item?
Rich, I said I'm on twenty-nine thirty North Wayland, and my main concern is parking on Wayland, and whether they're going to keep the ditches intact around this lot. They're really crowding Thirty First Street. You know, that Thirty First Street had that little bitty old house sitting there on the corner? You couldn't hardly see around that when you come to the corner. Now you're going to put this great big house, and like they said, that Thirty First Street, they're running past there pretty fast. That's my biggest concern is, are they both going to have, are they going to put double garages on this little, single-family house? Is that a double garage or a single garage?
Double.
Supposed to be a double garage on that?
Well, we'll have the petitioner, sir, answer your questions at that time.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm documenting, I'm here as you're asking your question.
If it's a single garage, anybody here who's got, lives in a little bitty house like that, the garage gets all the crap and the car sits in the road. When they put ditches up there, you know, I don't know, thirty years ago, everybody had to have off-street parking. That was a requirement before they'd do ditches. I myself voted for curb and gutter, but it didn't go through because it was too expensive for the other people. And, but yeah, you had to have off-street parking. I want enough parking in front of these houses so they can park on the opposite side of the ditch, on their side, and not be parked out in the street. There's, them roads are only thirty-foot wide up there. You put a car along the side, you can't hardly get by, you know, you meet cars, you wait. I guess that's my biggest complaint. Too much on one line. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else tonight that would like to speak on this item?
Rick Kubaszewski, thirty thirty North Wayland Avenue, forty-two years in my house. My biggest concern I have is that lot, that lot's being filled up with houses, there's no room left for no green space. If you've got pets, you're not going to have anywhere. If you've got kids, you'll have nowhere for those. Other than that, I measured the street, our streets are twenty-two feet wide maximum, no parking on any of them. The setback on Thirty First Street is only ten feet. I proposed a house on that same street. My setback is twenty-five feet compared to their setback, ten feet, makes no sense. Houses in line with each other shouldn't be a different distance from the street. I'm just saying, too much on that lot. My alternative would be split it into two lots, put two single-family houses on it. Everything up there is single-family. We don't have any twin homes. So I guess my thoughts are, is there's just too much put on a lot where there was one home before, and I got to worry about where's the water going to? We have no storm sewers, we have ditches, we have culverts, so anytime you build big buildings like that, you, the water don't soak into the land no more. It's got to go somewhere. I'm downhill from that. So I got to figure out where's that water going. I don't want to get flooded out, but my biggest concern is too much on one piece of property. Originally, there was one family lives there, and there was an old junk house on the corner that's been there forty years, never had paint. We tried to get it demolished for forty years. It finally got demolished, and now we want to, now somebody wants to give us this to look at. So I'm saying the house is too close to the corner of Thirty First Street. There's a lot of accidents there. The setbacks are not right on that street, not at ten feet. It's just not good enough. It's a safety concern, and I went down to see where I could put a house on that same corner, on that same intersection, and I need to set mine back twenty-five feet. Some reason, a twin home only needs ten feet, makes no sense to me. So if somebody could answer that question for me, I would definitely appreciate that part of it. Other than that, the parking, I'm concerned with the parking, too. Where are these people going to park? There are two bedrooms, another two bedrooms down the basement. Eventually, you put one car in east garage, where's the rest of them going to park? You're going to have at least two people in each unit, and they're going to have kids. So there's no guarantee how many people are going to live in those houses. I understand that part of it. But we have no parking on our streets. I measured the street on the way here, our streets are twenty-two feet wide. There is no parking on either side of them. So what happens when somebody parks on one side of the street? We got a one-way street. On the corner, that's a worse situation than it would be in the middle of a street. You can kind of go around them a little better on the middle of the street, but when it's on a corner, it's a whole new story. But my lot intersects both those streets the same way. I can put my driveway on the Wayland Avenue, just like the twin home would be on Wayland Avenue, but my concern is, is I need to lose another fifteen feet of my lot to build a house on versus putting this twin home on that particular lot. I don't understand why there would be any difference. I'm on the same street. But other than that, like I say, my biggest concern is they're using that whole lot up for houses. There's nowhere that kids could play, no, if you had a dog to go outside, I don't know where it'd go, because there ain't hardly enough grass left there. There's nothing left of that lot. It's all used up. It's all used up, front, backsides, unbelievable. So I mean, my recommendation is, I'd love to see a nice new house over there, but let's put two modular on the single lots, make it fit the neighborhood, and it would fit the neighborhood great. See if that, or if he wants to do a twin home, put one twin home on there, call it a day. Look beautiful over there. It's kind of all I got at this point. Any questions?
I'm a greener.
Any questions?
Greenery you have to have around these houses. Do they cover that?
That I don't know. I mean, does anybody know how much greenery? There can't be much left on these, on this lot. We are using up the...
Eighty percent? Seventy-five percent?
A lot of it. I went and looked at some of these twin homes. It looks to me like they put, they put bedrooms in the basement, they put the thing out there, you know, the egress window thing out there, and it looks to me like time they put that out there. That measures about three feet. There's no, there's not even room to walk between these houses anymore, time you put that out there. I've looked at some of these houses. I also visited with a lady next to some houses over on Belleveld Avenue. Lady told me horror stories.
Excuse me, sir. At this point, you've had your five-minute duration at this point, so if you could wrap it up, please.
Just wanted to let you know, the lady told me horror stories about these houses and the man that's putting them up. She's seventy years old.
Treated like junk.
Okay. Questions at all, Commissioners, at this point? At this point, I'm just going to recap real quick from what I've seen and heard from those that have testified so far. We have concerns about drainage. There are concerns about traffic density. View around the corner as far as traffic sightlines, how much parking would be available with the properties, on the properties. Street parking is a concern on Wayland in terms of density, and then the lot size in terms of amount of greenery. So at this point, those items have been noted and will be in line for addressing by the applicant petitioner. With that in mind, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item to offer testimony not already addressed by prior neighbors? Anyone at all? Very good.
My name is Jen Mulder. I live on twenty-nine thirty North Jessica Avenue, so just across the neighborhood. My biggest concern is also going to be for schooling. On the other side of the neighborhood, they recently started building the twin homes for Habitat, so we're going to be getting, I think, fourteen, fourteen twin homes? Sixteen twin homes that are also going to be family-based. My daughter goes to school down at Lorbe Anderson, which is where the neighborhood kids go to. She's in second grade, and that school's already so overrun with second graders that they had to make three second-grade classes, split one in half, and put it in with a third grade classroom, just to accommodate the new coming children that are currently there, not even from places that have been moved into yet. My other biggest concern is going to be like snow removal, included with parking, because if you have one person park on the street, especially Thirty First Street, you're not going to get plows through. And by the time a plow finally comes through that neighborhood, it's just going to be a nightmare. I was trying to think. The green space is the biggest thing. Like, our lot that we have is a hundred-foot wide by two hundred-foot deep. Biggest reason why we stayed in that neighborhood is because we like to have big yards, no neighbors. It's kind of like being able to be in the country, but still be in town. Most of the lots that are up there are formatted that way, and nobody here would oppose to have two houses there and just keep them setback from the road a little bit and give your kids a place to play. In the summertime, I don't know if you've, have any of you ever drove through Norton Acres? Have you had to dodge kids on bicycles because there's no places for them to ride their bikes except for down the middle of the road? I mean, that's, that's the reality that we live in every day. So then you start packing more houses in and more houses in and making it a more dense neighborhood. They have no place to go except for playing in the street or their yard. If they don't have a yard, where's your kid going to go? I mean, it's, that's the reality of having children in a neighborhood where there's no sidewalks, which is a choice, and I choose to keep my child up there. She doesn't play in the street because I'm a paranoid mom. However, you always have to watch out for everybody else's children living up there. And like they said, that corner is a nightmare. People come around that curve forty miles an hour, constantly. You're always having to watch for somebody flying through that corner, both directions even. So once you start having driveways there where people are going to be backing out onto roads, I, it's going to be an issue. It's not a matter of if, it's going to be a matter of when. Somebody's going to get hurt. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioners, any questions? Thank you much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item, again, presenting new items that haven't been addressed already for us?
My name's Sandy Hanson. I live at twenty-two oh five East Thirty Fourth Street North. I'm right next door to the new Habitat for Humanity subdivision that they put into our neighborhood, and I'm all about affordable housing in Sioux Falls, and no, we don't have enough of it. There's going to be sixteen twin homes right next to my single property home. Again, this is again for affordable housing. This is going to be affordable housing. There's Habitat for Humanity, which is affordable housing, right next to my single-family home. Two blocks up the street, there's another Habitat for Humanity neighborhood. Is Norton Acres and Bollik Edition the only places in Sioux Falls where they can put all of this affordable housing in Sioux Falls? I think everybody needs a place to live, but I think, are we misproportionately being placed in affordable housing only in the north end of Sioux Falls? If you really look at it, we have a lot of affordable housing being placed in our neighborhood. I'm, I'm not saying that affordable housing is for bad people, but if you look at the Habitat for Humanity houses up in our neighborhood, they're terrible. There's, some of them are even boarded up because of drug activity. We have plenty of that in our neighborhood already, and when you start stacking houses up on top of each other, like this developer wants to do, you're going to overpopulate our neighborhood with a lot of bad activity, and we have enough. We don't need to stack so many houses in a neighborhood that already has enough of its own issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Hanson, Commissioners? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak who hasn't spoken yet on items that haven't already been addressed? I'm sorry, you've already had your time to speak, sorry. There's anyone else that would like to speak, offering testimony on subjects that has not Seeing none. At this time, then, I'll close the floor to public testimony. We do have a gentleman. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Adam Dahl. I live at twenty-nine thirty North Jessica. I've had a few concerns. One being, with the setback being ten feet off Thirty First Street there, you know, we've had pretty good luck with snow this year, in the last couple. What happens when we get a big snow? Where's that snow going to go off to the side of the road? I mean, like you said, there's nowhere to walk, so you're going to have problems with drainage with the neighbor's house, because when that backs up, where's it going to go? Few other questions I have is, you know, this is a possibility of a four-bedroom house, each one. So when they have two parents, there's two cars, two kids, there's two cars, then they have people come over, where's everybody going to park?
Okay, so, let me interrupt you real quick. You've talked about drainage concerns, you've talked about traffic concerns and driveway space, those items we've already heard on, and I'm waiting to have those questions be addressed by the applicant. So if you have additional items that haven't really been discussed yet, that's what we'd want to hear from you at this time.
I'm just trying to point out that in the winter, you know, everything freezes up there, and I understand that in the summer, it's probably a different story, but when, you know, a couple of years ago, we had rivers going through the neighborhood, basically. So in the winter, when everything's, you got snow pushed up to the house, there's nowhere to go for it for in the spring. So that's all I wanted to point out. And then on the, you know, some of these houses, I think it was Belleveld, I'm not sure where it's built, but, you know, the yards in the houses are normal setbacks and normal yards, why are they trying to pack it into one little lot when it's in a lower-income neighborhood? When it's a higher-income neighborhood, you got all kinds of space on either side of the house. Looks like a normal house with a couple garages in the front. So I just kind of, I don't think it's appropriate to put that many people with, you know, with already the school having issues. I mean, the buses are running, I think, the other day, they were almost four o'clock before, when they were still dropping kids off in the neighborhood. So, I mean, that many more kids, I mean, that seems like an issue to me. But that's all I got.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Dahl? Seeing none, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on new subject matter on this item that has not been addressed yet? Okay, seeing none at this time, then I'll close the floor to public testimony, and I'd like to have, I think I'll start with Jason, if you could come up and address. Commissioners, I'll look for action at this time to formalize the discussion flow, please.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for approval.
A second.
Got a motion for approval and a second. Now for discussion, if I could have Jason come up, I'd like to have him start with some of the engineering drainage subject matter that was discussed, and perhaps off-street parking requirements as well.
Yep, thank you, Commissioner. So drainage, as we know, with any project, we have drainage engineers as we, they look through this, they make sure that it's going to meet our drainage standards within our engineering design standards. So drainage will have to be met on this specific property, no matter how many houses they put on there. Parking, parking is required with the number of bedrooms at two spaces per each of the units. They're showing a forty-four by twenty-four-foot garage, so when they split it down the middle, they have a two-stall garage for each of the twin homes, two parking spaces, and then also a two-stall garage for the single-family home that's on the south side. So they meet the parking requirements, same parking requirements as all over the city. To address setbacks, these proposed units right here meet the same setback, same front yard, same rear yard, same side yard as the other properties within the city and within this neighborhood, same minimum setbacks. The only difference is that ten-foot setback along Thirty First Street. That's the only change. Just to look at the proposed, what the existing zoning is to go and propose, it's all zoned RD one, which allows twin homes, duplexes, and single family. So in theory, they're actually getting less dense because the applicant could put two duplexes on this property for four total units. They're taking the south half and taking that from duplex or twin home to a single family. So it's technically, could possibly be... So, it's technically, could possibly be getting less dense. The only reason for the rezoning is because that single-family lot's only gonna be forty-four feet wide, and then to get that ten-foot, uh, setback along Thirty-first Street, um, that's the specific reason. Uh, the gentleman's property, uh, he would also have the right to, to go for rezoning if he didn't wanna meet the twenty-five and twenty. He could go down to this zoning district, and that's where you would do the twenty and ten aggregate for some of these, uh, infill lots that we have in the city. That's why we, uh, we, we did that zoning district as part of Shape Places. Uh, some of the snow concerns, the street may be twenty-two feet wide, but if you look at this specific map, um, Thirty-first Street and Wayland Avenue is a sixty-foot wide right-of-way. So, if you take the center line of that street and go south, it's thirty feet in each direction. So, there's eighteen feet before you actually hit this property line on this, on this, uh, for this proposal. And then you got another ten. So, there's twenty-eight feet of, of area that's gonna be green from the street, and then on the Wayland side, you're actually gonna have, um, so if you took the twenty-two or twenty-four, you'd have, uh, eighteen plus twenty-five, you also have forty feet before you actually hit the structures. Uh, so there will be adequate area for snow, snow removal or the plows to do it. Similar to every other neighborhood in town, if people are parking on the street during snow events, tickets, toes, just like in my neighborhood, anybody's neighborhood, gotta get your cars off the street so the city can actually plow it. If you don't, they either go around you or they start ticketing, and then the police come by and tow your cars and different things like that. So, I didn't know if there was any other questions on there that I forgot to answer.
I don't know if this is, uh, more for potentially the applicant, but the green space?
Yep, good, good. Good question. We don't have a specific green space requirement, a percentage, but as indicated, these setbacks, especially for that single-family house, it's the same setbacks as, um, any other neighborhood, uh, suburban neighborhood out, you know, in the southeast part of town, northwest part of town, central part of town, twenty-five, twenty-five, five on the sides. Those are the, the setbacks for most single-family lots in Sioux Falls. Most people don't build exactly to the minimums, but those are the minimums.
Excellent. Jason, to that end, what is the current setback with the current zoning on Thirty-first Street?
Uh, the current setback for the current zoning on Thirty-first Street would be, so he's got twenty-five on the east of Wayland, he would have twenty, so it's ten-foot. So, he could, or he, he, ten-foot less with this zoning. So, essentially, he could still build that same unit if he shrunk it up by ten feet, and that may just to make the garage smaller by ten feet too, getting less garage, but he could still do the, the twin home on there if he provided a twenty-foot setback off of Thirty-first Street.
Very good. Any other questions for...
I've got another one, Mr. Chair, sorry. Um, street improvements, anything planned in the future? I would imagine no, but I just wanted to run...
No street improvements planned. They did as part of this application. You can kinda see those black line, or the black circles on there. That was the existing lot line as part of this rezoning and replating. Engineering did acquire some additional right-of-way. I think it was seven feet? Six or seven feet along, along, uh, Wayland and along East Thirty-first Street, because there wasn't as much right-of-way as, as the sixty-foot as required by, uh, by engineering design standards.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, uh, Jason, I got a few questions, just... Just, just to recap, but...
I'm sorry, the floor has been closed to public testimony.
Uh, city engineering staff will review a drainage plan from the applicant on this property to ensure...
Yep, it's part of, uh, any, any, uh, new construction that we do. Um, that is part of the permit process is reviewed by city engineer. They'll look at it during the plating process too, even before the specific units are constructed.
Okay. And then, I know there's some comments or concerns about intersection safety. Can you make...
Yep, yep, those are, those are very valid concerns for the intersection safety. Uh, one of the reasons why we, we preferred him to face during Wayland is obviously Thirty-first Street North is probably a collector street that handles more traffic. We heard from the neighbors that there is additional traffic on there. So, we have an intersection safety zone standard. From that northeast corner property pin, you go thirty feet to the west and thirty feet to the south and draw that triangle. Anything within that triangle can't be over three feet high.
Good. And then finally, on the proposed zoning of RT, is there any other property in this area zoned RT?
Uh, looking at that, there's, there's some properties, there's one to the west here, that's a pretty small lot that probably should be zoned RT. I'm not sure if it is right now. Looks like that one's on RD-one, but that wouldn't meet our minimum lot requirements for a single-family house.
Mr. Chair, if I could add on to that. Jason, with me, we look at this aerial here, it looks like there's construction on this parcel to the northeast. Seems like it's I-one when I look at the zoning. Uh, do we know what is actually built there, or what kind of industrial that is?
Uh, yep, the, the new owners are building some storage sheds on that and then complying with all of the, uh, required buffer yards and stuff. It's been an I-one used for quite a while. That's been scraped, and then, uh, they're doing some of these storage units.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Uh, there's some comments about, uh...
Contractor shop storage units, same deal, but...
Uh, there's some comments about school stuff. We, I mean, we don't do much with school stuff at all, do we?
We don't deal with the school stuff. Your job is land use and that kinda deal, uh, to make sure that the land use fits in and, and with a comprehensive plan. School district boundaries, obviously, when, when one school fills up, they're gonna have to redraw them or, or build another elementary school, take some from, um, from Lorbe, if that's the one that's full, and, and kinda redraw those districts. Similar how they did with Jefferson High School, and that came online, obviously, they pulled kids from Washington and Roosevelt to go there and redraw the districts.
And then, I'm not sure, maybe this would be a county thing, but, uh, is there any covenants, is there anything like that, or in place that...
I'm assuming there is not. I haven't heard of any covenants in this neighborhood.
Okay. Um, and then, in the RD-one, so I, I, if you go to the, the map that shows the, um, satellite version, so one more back. Um, so just looking to the north, it looks like, uh, we've got some, uh, a mobile home park, uh, to the north, and we've got to the, the east, we've got, uh, looks like some duplexes and stuff over there. Where I'm trying, my head's trying to wrap around is, the density issue is, a lot of this is dense in my thought process, um, because you've got mobile homes that are right next to each other. Uh, you've got, uh, and this is how my, my thought process is going based on looking at this. And then you go to the east, and you look at those, um, there's no surface other than concrete and foundations over there. Is that, um, I mean, I'm just trying to visualize, like, where the, you know, the issue is with, um, density.
Uh, we drove up there today, uh, me and Adam drove around there. They, they are correct, when you get more to the east of that, there are some larger lots in there, but there's also some smaller lots in this area. Um, density with this, um, you know, our minimum lot size for single families, five-thousand square feet, if you take a third of the acre, this, uh, three units on that third of an acre is roughly forty-five-hundred square feet per unit, so it's not much more dense than a minimum lot size you can build out on, you know, Fifty-seventh and, you know, Bonson or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
What is the, what's the speed limit on Thirty-first? I, there was a couple comments on the traffic and the speed. What's the current speed limit, Dean?
That I don't know offhand. I'm gonna guess twenty-five.
And we don't, we don't really have control of that, uh, the traffic portion either, correct?
We would not. Um, traffic engineering can go out there if there's some additional speeding. It's a collector, though, twenty-five is typical what they, what they do for that.
I mean, to get, like, speed bumps or traffic, you know, uh, more traffic controls, stop signs, stuff like that.
Speed bumps we're not gonna utilize, obviously, with, uh, um, snow plowing. They don't work very well. Um, there's some, there's some ability for them to put maybe children at play signs out there and things like that. We've done it in some neighborhoods. Typically, when they go out there, though, and actually put down, um, the strips to see our speed, speed things, um, it's not quite as bad as, as most of the time, but we've done that in quite a few neighborhoods. We have that concern quite a bit. Get the average speed of the cars going by per day.
Very good. Commissioners, any other questions for staff at this point? I think, I'm sorry, public testimony has been closed. I think we'd be all right then. Thanks, Jason. Commissioners, we have a motion and a second on the floor on this item. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, um, you know, I think we had a lot of great testimony. I really appreciate, uh, the public coming out to, uh, give us some of their thoughts. Uh, that is helpful. As I look at, uh, what this is trying to propose, uh, it does appear to be compliant with Shape Places, which is really the ordinance that we have in Sioux Falls. It, uh, was a well-considered ordinance that had a lot of input from the public, and this allows a landowner to do the kinds of things they want to, as long as it still complies with those requirements. So, I think it's important to recognize there's, there's, uh, there's both rights by the neighborhood and rights by the landowner to do what they wanna do with a piece of property, so I can respect both of those opinions. Uh, as I heard some comments about parking, and when I see two, um, parking stalls inside a garage, and then clearly two more parking stalls in the driveway, that sounds like capacity of four cars. There's times where my house has that many cars in front of it or inside. Uh, that seems reasonable to me for a two-bedroom house. And then I look at the setback on the north side, you know, I think a lot of people forget, uh, that a setback is to the property line, it's not to the edge of the road. And I think Jason covered that, uh, in both these conditions, where the edge to the road is probably going to be quite a bit significantly larger than that. It may be as much as twenty feet, uh, between the house and the side of the road. Uh, so, I think that seems like it's workable to me. Uh, twenty-five-foot, uh, rear yard is above and beyond what the requirements are, so I see that as being more than compliant, and I think they're trying to keep some green space, uh, for those homeowners, which everybody likes to have some yard. Uh, and even a ten-foot between homes, that's a bigger gap than a lot of neighborhoods I drive through, and, uh, I can appreciate that, uh, being, it seems like it's pretty compliant to me. And then, uh, you know, I think the comment about them all being concentrated in one place, uh, I have heard that from every single person that, um, that I've heard a complaint about that. They think all of the denser objects are landing in their neighborhood. I've heard that from my own neighbors, that they think it's all in our neighborhood, and I know from experience, these are all over town, there's a huge demand, and, uh, I think a lot of places are just trying to find those spots where they can fit into kind of a, an environment in a neighborhood in a sensitive way, and I think this one is trying to do that in, uh, a very conscientious way, so I'm in support of it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, any other discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would just like to add that I appreciate all the comments from the, the neighbors. Um, you can tell that you definitely love your neighborhood and where you live in Sioux Falls. It's change is hard. The city of Sioux Falls is changing right now. We are becoming a bigger city. There's more people moving here, and we have such a huge need for affordable housing. And so, to me, that, that need outweighs what you're telling me about the change in your neighborhood. I think all of us are gonna have to go through changes in the next several years with the growth of our city. It's not gonna be the same city that we grew up with, so I'm gonna be in favor of supporting this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to add a little bit. Uh, I, I think that there's possibly some traffic concerns in this area. I can kinda see that from the aerials and kinda see the way the, uh, street, Thirty-first Street to the west kinda slopes around there. I think, I, I'm, I'm not in traffic world, I don't live in that world, I'm not an expert in it. When I look at it, from what I've just heard tonight, it seems to be there some issues there that the city could possibly address. However, we are working on a rezone tonight, and yes, we do take traffic considerations into our, uh, judgments, but the, i- in my opinion, the rezone has to change the amount of traffic that's taking place. And when I look at this and think that there was a mobile home on here and a single-family home on here before, and now we're going to a twin home and a single-family home, I don't think that that change is going to have a substantial effect on the traffic in the area. Uh, also, separately, when you're talking about parking, uh, I think they really did an amazing job adding, uh, three two-stall garages to this project. Uh, I think that's impressive, and, uh, I think that's more than ample parking on-site. So, uh, I would just also like to echo, thank you to the citizens for coming out and speaking on this tonight. This is the first step in the process, uh, regardless of how this ends up. March fifteenth, April fifth, the city council will hear this twice, and I would strongly encourage you to go and, uh, voice your opinions at those meetings as well. Uh, but nevertheless, uh, I will be voting in support of this item.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any other comments, discussion? Hearing none, at this point, I'll call a question. Uh, all those in favor of item two B, sorry, five A, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. That item has passed this evening.
Item six is a public input on non-agenda items, a five-minute comment period per individual.
Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, any non-agenda items you'd like to come forward and speak to is appropriate. Any comments from the public at this time? Seeing none, then I will go ahead and close the non-agenda public testimony period. And any new business? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. We are adjourned. Have a great night, Sioux Falls.